Good evening, everyone. It is March 28th at 7:30 approximately, and this is the regular meeting of Fitchburg's Common Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Julia Radifrata. Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Dan Carpenter.
Here.
Jason Gonzalez.
Here.
Tony Hartman.
Present.
Jake Johnson.
Here.
Dorothy Crowsey.
Here.
Carol Poole.
Here.
Patrick Stern. You have a form.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Dorothy Crowsey to introduce a special guest.
For the first time since I've been sitting up here, my mom is joining us, Marge and her husband Alan.
Welcome to Fitchburg. All right, next up, public appearances for non-agenda items. I'm going to open the public hearing for, well, before I do, Phil Sveum would also like to speak on the comprehensive plan. It is his development that has caused this, the, is the source for this comp plan amendment, and he would like to just speak at the, at the time, just before we discuss it, if that's okay with the council. All right, seeing no objection. I'll open the public hearing for that ordinance, ordinance 2017-0-04, comp plan amendment. Is there any members of the public here tonight who would like to speak about that amendment? I have no registrations up front, so I will close the public hearing. And is, are, is anyone here for anything else that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda, entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Okay, is there, thank you. Are there any separations or other discussion? Carol.
I'd like to separate item 14, please.
Very good. Are there any other separations or other discussion? Seeing none then, for the remainder of the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. Carol, would you like to make a motion?
Actually, I think I would move to table or...
So this is on referral.
Correct.
And...
Can we table referrals or not?
So the, well, I think that you would want to deny a referral. Is that your opinion, city administrator?
I would either deny it or...
It's either deny it or extend the referral to other entities.
Okay, so this is not on the substance of this. That should be discussed when it comes back with a recommendation for CETA.
Do you like to speak on your, well, do you want to move to not refer?
Actually, what I would, I would move to refer this to Finance and Plan Commission as well.
If there are no objections, I will simply add that.
There hasn't been a second.
What?
There hasn't been a second, though. Don't you need a second?
Oh, right, let's have a...
I didn't think we needed seconds pulling out referrals.
So you're gonna need a second for the motion, but her original motion is to refer it to CETA and Finance and Plan. So is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on the referral to those three bodies? Seeing none, all in favor of the referral, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, two noes. Thank you, that passes. Administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few events that I wanted to note prior to our next meeting in regards to Fitchburg Earth Month. April 1st, from 9:00 to 11:00, there'll be a waterway cleanup in Fitchburg, and you can check the website for those locations. April 5th, 7:00 to, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM, there'll be a Fitchburg Climate Forum with Dean County Executive Joe Parisi, and that'll be located at the Fitchburg Library. And then, April 10th, at 7:00 PM, is Citizen Science Monitoring, and that's at the Fitchburg Library at 7:00 PM. I would also like to note that there is going to be a ribbon cutting tomorrow, and that will be located at Farrell's Extreme Body Shaping, and that's gonna be at 4:00 PM. So that, I don't have that address handy, but that can be found online also. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Pat. I think I can come up with that address quickly. That will be at 6060 McKee Road, Suite 2, which is sort of across the street from the movie theater. All right. Commissions and committee reports. Plan Commission is first. Carol.
Thank you. On behalf of the Plan Commission, I recommend approval of ordinance 2016-0-28 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR01-17, as adopted by the Plan Commission with an amendment to the ownership table on pages 45 and B10 to correct the ownership for parcel 8.
Second.
Thank you. We have some folks that would like to testify. I do have Ron Johnson, who is the Chair of the Steering Committee, is here to answer questions. I have Bob Shea, who is on the Steering Committee, who is here to register only in support of the matter. And I have Dan Glinnert, who would like to speak, so, Bob. Okay, I will, I will, I crossed off the wrong one. I'm sorry. I apologize. Come on forward, Robert and Dan. And go ahead, Robert, you can go first.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Shea. I live at 2809 Sunflower Drive, City of Fitchburg, and I'm also an owner over at Wingra Stone Company, and our property is one of the significant properties in the Anton Study District, which our committee was, has been addressing for many months now. I'm here to tell you that I support the finished product that we came up with. It was a laborious effort by a large group of people, and we had much input from the community, from the neighborhood, from interested people, and a big and diverse committee, I thought, and I'm very pleased with the finished product. I don't like everything about it, but I think, I think it's a good product, and I do want you to know that I support it, and I believe we did a good job working through that process. So mostly, I would just like to encourage you tonight to consider it, and if you can support it, I think that would be great, and pass it. I think that would be great, and I would also be available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Bob at this time? Seeing none, Dan?
Hi, I'm Dan Glinnert, 777 University Avenue, Madison, Wisconsin, 53715. And so you guys have a large pack at tonight, so I think Bob summarized all the big points, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help if I can.
Seeing no question.
Oh, and I support the plan, obviously.
And you are a landowner in the area. You can...
Oh, yeah.
Control an entity that owns land in the area.
Right, I'm a partner in the Fitz-Glin partnership.
Very good. And that partnership is the one whose ownership name got changed to be correct. So thank you for that, Carol. So seeing no, Tony, go ahead.
Just one question for either gentleman, and I guess my question is this, there were a lot of meetings, but I'm not aware of how many meetings, and it was open to everybody, right? I mean, at first, we created a committee, but then we had a lot of public meetings. Is that accurate?
Yes. I wasn't on the committee, but that didn't stop me from either watching all the meetings or coming to them, so it was public, and I feel like, you know, everyone had a fair shot.
My comment on that, as a committee member, is that it was certainly a public meeting, and the public was well-informed and showed up. Frankly, the neighborhood showed up, and interested people showed up. So I think there was just many, many, many opportunities for anybody who had any interest in, in that neighborhood plan to get in and let their voice be heard, and speak up, and listen, and learn, and participate. So sometimes, there was so much input, I might have to admit, I might have been a little uncomfortable, possibly, but I think, at the end, we all contributed to a good product.
I would add that the meeting was held at, fires, meetings were held at Fire Station Number 2 on transit, and unlike a lot of our meetings that made it accessible to folks who lived in the area, Fire Station Number 2 is in the planning area, and people who could not drive were still able to attend. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And were there any questions for Ron? Thank you for coming, Ron. All right, council discussion.
I'd just like to thank Susan and Tom for meeting with me and addressing some of the concerns that I had on this plan. As Bob said, it's a good plan, but I did have concerns about the density. I have been consistent in those concerns from the very beginning, even before we started. So I think in looking, I wanted to be assured that there was enough flexibility in this plan, and to make sure that there were enough traffic trips in this plan to support all of the possible outcomes that we could have with this plan. I like the fact that we have the medium density backing up to the single-family. Previous iterations I had seen had had three-story apartment buildings backing up to single-family homes, which I think is bad planning. I was accused of torpedoing this plan. That is not true. Mr. Glinnert, if you have questions for me, I'd appreciate it if you just email me and ask me, instead of sending emails to get forwarded to me. I want this to be a good development, just as much as anyone does. This is my district, I've lived here for 30 years. I want it to reflect the community. I talked to Bob Shea a long time ago about how I thought that corner was being underutilized on our future land use map and needed to be changed. We knew that this would get adjusted, and I think, even though I don't love everything that's in the plan, I think it is a good plan, and I think that Dorothy and Ron did a really good job. I just felt that as an alder, I owed my constituency, I had a responsibility to my constituency to make sure that I was comfortable with the plan that we were passing for that neighborhood, because they are the ones that are gonna live with this 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. I think it's a, it's a good lesson for us as a city. When we look at doing a plan like this, how long is this plan gonna be on the shelf? We had one come before us, the Plan Commission, last Tuesday for the McGaw Plan. McGaw Plan was done, what, 10 years ago, Steve? Just about, eight years ago? You know, how long do we let these plans sit on the shelf before we review them, to make sure that they're still keeping track with the market, and they're still keeping track with what the development patterns are, and what we want as a city? You know, things change over the years, so let's make sure that we have enough flexibility in these plans that they can serve the test of time and not have to be revisited all the time. And my suggestion for, I think, the previous meeting, for wondering whether we want to put these maps in our comprehensive plan, that was the whole reason, is that then, 10 years from now, if something comes down the pike, that maybe there's a different appetite for a different type of building, are we excluding it because we've been too restrictive in our plans? And then do we have to go through the whole process of doing comprehensive plan amendments to get a development done, and then all of a sudden, we have people leave because it took too long to get it done? So I wanted to make sure that I felt that all of the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, and I apologize for the colloquialism, but I do have a comfort level now with this plan that I did not have before, and again, I thank Tom and Susan for taking the time to meet with me and answer my questions, and Mike Zimmerman as well. I wanted to make sure this is a plan that serves the marketability of Fitchburg. You know, we can plan all we want for good planning, but if it's not marketable, it isn't serving the city. It's not serving anybody. So I just am happy that I can support this plan now, and I hope that you will all too. Thank you.
Dan?
Thanks, Steve. I just have a question for Carol, 'cause I know you and I are on the same page a lot of the times when it comes to density-related issues. Could you maybe just talk a little bit more about the density after talking to Susan and Tom and others about that? 'Cause the plan does call for a lot of density, and studies have shown that Fitchburg has more than our fair share of apartments, we don't have enough single-family homes, and something I hear about in District 3 quite often from my constituents, what's with all the apartments? What's with all the apartments going up? Jeez, do we only build apartments in Fitchburg? So the density hasn't changed, so if you could maybe just talk about your conversations related to the density with them, I'd just appreciate the input.
What I was concerned about is, obviously, this is a development that's gonna have mixed-use capabilities, it's gonna have some high density, and it's gonna have some medium-density areas as well. And you're right, Dan, I mean, we heard a lot about how people don't like the buildings that are at the corner of Cyan Road and Lacy Road. It's following our plan. So it makes you wonder, over time, when we're following our plans, are TODs still something that is even gonna be in the future? Are there ever gonna be trains? Maybe not. Maybe it's gonna be bus, rabid transit, but people get surprised sometimes, even though we say, we invited the neighbors, we posted it on the city website, the neighbors knew about it. Well, they don't always know, unless they're savvy, and they're looking at the website, and they know what to look for. You know, they'll hear stuff word of mouth or whatever, but what I don't like is when people get a bad surprise like that, when they're saying, you know, why are we building these giant buildings right up to the road? Well, that's because that's what Smart Code does, and that's what a TOD is, and that's what's in the neighborhood plan, and shame on you for not paying attention. No, you know, we should be communicating as leaders. So what my concern was, is what's this gonna look like with a lot of density in it? Because most of this area had previously been identified as low-density residential, so people kind of expected, if you bought a house and you were smart, and you went and looked at the future land use map for Fitchburg, you're thinking, oh, well, there's just gonna be more neighborhoods like mine in my backyard. No, it's changed now, dramatically. So I wanted to know, what's the total number of units? And the total number of units is tricky to figure out, because it depends on how much commercial goes in and how much residential goes in. And this plan does offer flexibility in that. If, I think, what we landed on is the best estimate we could come up with was that it might be about 480 dwelling units in that entire area.
Jake.
And then if we had, sorry, and then if we had larger commercial developments that took up the traffic trips, that would, that would be reduced by land area and by trips.
How, what percentage is that, of that is high density?
Is the map accessible quickly? It's not a ton of it. The entire outfield is pretty much either commercial or medium density. There are some higher-density areas that, but the already high-density areas. So, I mean, when you look at Jamestown and you look at District 1 in general, we have a very high percentage of apartments and high-density uses there. So that was part of my other goal, is, you know, how many high-density units are you gonna put in the same place? I mean, it makes sense from some aspects, like transit, it makes sense to have a ton of people all in one place. But from a quality-of-life standpoint, sometimes when you talk to neighbors who live next to apartment buildings, they don't always think it's great to have a whole bunch of apartment buildings in their neighborhood. So it's a balancing act, and that's what I wanted to make sure that this plan had, was a clear enough balance that we can put the high density where we need it and keep the, keep the single-family a little more protected from high density.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I'll sit, Dan.
Yeah, thanks. Yep, thank you.
I have Jake and then Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to speak first to the plan in general. I absolutely agree. I think the people did a great job putting the plan together. I think it's a good step forward in a neighborhood that needs this, and I think, bravo to Dorothy and to the folks who are involved in this, to put it together. I want to speak just to the parks element of it. So at the Park Commission meeting, Park Commission was well-aware of the lack of parkland in that area of town. There's a big void of parkland in that area of town, it's a big problem. As a matter of fact, we recently spent half a million dollars to buy a duplex and wreck it to get a half an acre of parkland. So half a million dollars for half an acre of parkland. I voted for it, I supported that project, that was needed.
It was in a half a million dollars.
Right now, in our current ordinances, when a developer is developing, and based on the number of dwelling units they have, they have to give us, I'm sorry, they have to dedicate parkland to the city. If they don't want to dedicate parkland, if they see, wow, that value is really high, and we'd rather build more housing, they can pay a fee in lieu of. For every acre they do not dedicate out of what is required, they can pay $65,000 to the city to get out of dedicating that acre. My point being is, those are the numbers on the book, I'm not, I could make another whole argument about what those numbers should be, but those are the numbers on the book. So what the Park, what the Park Commission said is, we really want to make sure, in any new development, we accept parkland and not parkland, or fees in lieu of that parkland. That area needs parks, it's stupid to accept $65,000 and then pay half a million dollars to wreck a duplex and put in a hodgepodge park. So with that being said, I would propose an amendment to this that would add the language, "Due to the area's deficiency in parkland, the Park Commission recommends accepting land for park dedication and no fee in lieu of parkland dedication for this development."
Do you know where you want that in the plan?
I, I do not, but I originally...
Or is it in the resolution?
I don't think that needs to be in the resolution, I think it should be in the plan.
Okay. Let's...
I have a question on that, Steve.
Hang on just a second.
Yeah, Dan would like me to repeat that. Can I repeat it before we get a second?
Yes, yep.
So I would like to add the wording, and again, this, we talked about this in the past, I don't believe it's incumbent on this new development to go over and above on parkland and make up for other developments nearby. I totally agree with Carol on that. "Due to the area's deficiency in parkland," this is a documented thing on our website, so I'm sorry, I just, I just spoke in the middle of my amendment. "Due to the area's deficiency in parkland, the Park Commission recommends accepting land for parkland dedication and no fee in lieu of parkland dedication." So again, this, what is this, what does this hold? Doesn't, the Park Commission and the council can do whatever, but I just wanted it in the plan, I just wanted that to be said.
Is there a second to that language? And I would assume that you're happy to have staff find the proper place to drop that in?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second, 'cause I want to discuss it, but I think Pat had something he wanted to say.
Well, I have Tony and then Jason now. Do you want to defer back to the main motion, Tony and Jason?
I, I did, but I want to talk about this, so...
Okay, well, you're, you're up on the queue.
Well, okay, so my, my question is, is we have a lot of different landowners that are affected by this, and if every one of them dedicated land, then we'd have, I think, a potential, I mean, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, is it seems overly simplistic to adopt what you just said. Not that I disagree necessarily with it, but I'm trying to figure out how we do this so that we don't end up with, you know, 18 pieces of parkland that aren't contiguous and don't make sense, even though I know it's a, it's a park-challenged area. So I guess I'll leave it at that. I was gonna ask Carol a question, but I can take, do that offline later about her institutional knowledge on future planning.
Jason?
This is a question for Pat, since our city attorney's here. Can we even do that, since our ordinances require us to allow the option of park, fee in lieu of, or parkland? Can we basically saddle people into something that's not even consistent with our ordinances? And I think, I know the answer is no, but...
Yeah, we cannot. I mean, we could make a suggestion in the plan that we would prefer land in lieu of payment for, but it would just be a suggestion that would be considered. It, obviously, they have one or the other they get to choose from in our ordinance.
I don't mean to contradict, but I, I think that, I think the opposite. I think that it's up to the Park Commission. That decision has been delegated to the Park Commission, and then, I mean, Jake, you would know best, but I think that if someone doesn't like the Park Commission's decision, then they can appeal it to the council.
That's not true.
Okay. I retract that statement.
Yeah, they have the option, and in a lot of cases, there just isn't land available in a small development to dedicate parkland. A lot of situations, they are, but the land may not even be feasible for park development in some cases. That's why they have the option there.
I have Carol then Jake.
So I have two things. Number one, we have a process problem, because that would be a substantive change to the Plan Commission resolution, so we would have to re-refer it to the Plan Commission to have this amended. So we wouldn't be able to act on it tonight. And number two, if the goal of this plan is to have density in that area, doing what you're suggesting is completely contrary to encouraging density in development, because you would be requiring so much open space that it would be not conducive to high-density development. That's the whole reason we have, well, one of the reasons we have Smart Code, and that's why the requirement for parkland is lower. When you have high density, when you have a lot of units, that's a lot of acres. So, you know, I understand, and I agree, and we did, we did spend about $200,000 on that duplex and having it demolished, but I just don't think that that's prudent language to put in the plan for what it's calling for, and we would have to re-refer it.
Jake. And then me, and then Dorothy.
Just quickly, so what that does, that doesn't, that doesn't hogtie anyone, the council still has a decision. What it does is it gets put in the plan as a recommendation from the Park Commission. The wording that I read, read that it was the Park Commission's recommendation, it was a unanimous recommendation. People really wanted to try to say, we really want land here, because it would help make a current problem not worse. And that's the key, is we gotta not make situations worse. We have the power to do that, and I realize that, yes, this would put language in there, it doesn't, doesn't tie anyone to that decision, but it shows that it was the Park Commission's intent at that time, that this should be strongly considered.
So did the Park Commission actually vote on that question?
Yes.
They actually voted on to add this into the plan?
Yes.
When was that done?
That was done prior to plan.
Prior to the plan?
Yep.
Then why was that not presented when we did the plan originally?
It was.
It's not in the Plan Commission notes. It came from Park.
It was two months ago at Parks.
I wanted to call on Susan Batke anyway, or at least recognize her for her work as our community planner, who shepherded this project through.
I would be happy to clarify this situation. So this was...
So we'll call on her now to answer this question.
Yes, Susan Batke, Community Planner. So the Park Commission did review the draft plan, the public hearing draft plan, and there was discussion at that time. I recall discussion about the preference of taking all land versus any fee in lieu payment, and I cautioned the Commission on that, stating, there may be a case in which the city, you know, sometimes quality is better than quantity. So I did caution on that. The language that the Park Commission ended up on was in the public hearing draft that went to Plan Commission and read the following. Provide at least one park space that provides a unique activity. Program, no, I'm not finding it. But there was, there was discussion, that might not have been the exact language, but it, the, the Park Commission did not land on taking, they wanted to make sure that the Jamestown service area was taken into account. So they didn't, their action was not to require or to put preference over land versus fee in lieu. The Plan Commission, and you'll find this on page 20 of the plan, what the Plan Commission did was, they landed on, they amended the verbiage that Park Commission, but it's still somewhat the same, in that the Jamestown area is deficient in park placement, the city shall work with any redevelopment in this study area to take service of the Jamestown area into account. So that's what the, the Plan Commission ultimately had. I, I believe that what the, yeah, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not seeing it in this document that I thought I had, but that's ultimately what the Plan Commission landed on, was the Jamestown area is deficient in park placement. So they wanted to recognize that, but not put the onus on, I think it was, the onus was on, what the Park Commission verbiage was, the onus was on the developer, and it was discussed at Plan Commission that it should be more of a joint effort.
So I'm, in lieu of that, I am happy to withdraw my amendment.
All right, that makes it easy. I was gonna speak on that amendment, so I'll pass. Dorothy, do you still have something to say?
Well, I was just going to say that my initial thought was that there are multiple landowners that would all have to get together, and are we going to have four or five little itty-bitty parks? Or is there a way to plan one large park to serve the entire... itty-bitty parks, or is there a way to plan one large park to serve the entire development area as well as the Jamestown area behind it? So I, I think it's a more complex thing than saying everybody needs to provide land.
Yeah, typically this would be taken care of during a land assembly and comprehensive development, uh, plan, uh, which is, provides the, the next detail for redevelopment of an area this size. Is there any other discussion on this?
So are we-
So we're voting on the amendment.
Amendment.
Yes, uh, no, that amendment was withdrawn.
We're on the main motion.
Let me just ask, Tony, you seconded the amendment. Are you okay with withdrawing the amendment? Okay.
No problem.
So we're back to the, um, main motion. Is there any more discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Now, we have here a plan commission resolution. We're not really voting on that. They did, uh, but we're recognizing its existence and, uh, we're going to vote on the ordinance, so, so everybody know what we're voting for. All in favor of, um, adopting the ordinance, twenty sixteen dash oh dash twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you all for coming in for that item. Next up are, um, oh, sorry, Carol.
That's all right. We have two that are together, but we will read them separately because they need separate votes. So we have, I recommend approval of ordinance twenty-seventeen dash oh dash zero nine, which is rezone request twenty-one thirty-eight dash seventeen, a zoning ordinance amendment for approving rezoning request RZ twenty-one thirty-eight seventeen by Ron Kloss, agent for Joe and Karen Redden, to rezone a property at fifty-three twenty, fifty-three twenty-nine Lacy Road, Lot Two, CSM thirty-sixty, from the AT Transitional Agriculture District to the RLM, which is residential, uh, I believe that's supposed to say low to medium density. District a small portion into the BG, General Business District and a portion to the AS Small Lot Agriculture District.
Second.
Uh, plan commission approved. Um, in your packet, there is a copy of the land division. Um, what they are trying to do is they want to split this property into four parcels, two lots and two outlots. Uh, they want to rezone Lot One of the CSM to residential low density. Uh, Lot Two is going to be BG, Business General, and the two proposed outlots, they are going to leave an AS Small Agriculture District as they don't have any, um, current plans for that land at this time. Um, Lot One currently has a historic property on it. Lot Two would be the one that's general business. Um, at plan commission, we went through the permitted uses and conditional uses that would be allowed. Um, it does follow the McGaw neighborhood plan. Um, we did recommend to the landowner that if there is a commercial use on Lot Two, that it should probably, if possible, reflect the, the nature of the historical building that's next to it. So we don't want a whole bunch of fluorescent lights next to a beautiful Victorian home. So plan commission and staff recommend approval. Uh, we had one dissenter at plan commission. It was not unanimous.
Yep, very good. Uh, we'd call Joe and Ron forward. So we have two who are testify, the applicant and his consultant, and, um, or, well, I guess Ron is the applicant on behalf of the landowner. But, uh, go in either order and identify yourselves.
Hello, my name is Joe Redden. I am the owner of five-three-two-nine Lacy Road. I've lived in Fitchburg for well over thirty years. Uh, and as you may know, this property has been quietly for sale for over fifteen of those years. Been challenging. The, uh, North McGaw Park Neighborhood Plan, um, laid out that there should be residential and mixed use. It's a challenging area for mixed use. In order to be able to sell or develop this property, we felt it was necessary to do a land division to try and separate some of these uses, as we could not find a developer who would be willing to take on the project of all the different types of uses that there might be there. And Ron has more details, and I'm here to answer questions. Thank you. Ron?
Ron Kloss, Denofree Okotki. We prepared the CSM and rezone application for Joe, and Carol actually covered all the points very well. Uh, I just want to reiterate that Joe's house is on Lot One, so that remains residential. And the two outlots are really just a, a holding pattern for now. They will need to be further resubdivided and rezoned at a future date.
Questions for those testifying? Tony?
Uh, Ron, this was, as I recall, uh, maybe in a Broadway part of the discussion of water moving down from the Fahey Fields project. Can you just talk about that for a second, just to refresh my memory?
Sure. There is water from Fahey Fields moving through Joe's land. It will all be on Outlet Two. And, uh, can we, and Fahey Fields actually has, uh, an agreement with Joe to buy Outlet Two at some point in the future. But, but all that water is within that parcel.
Seeing no further discussion?
I was gonna have a print map.
Is there any discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Uh, this is on the rezone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then, um-
Recommend approval of resolution R dash seventy dash seventeen, which is CS twenty-one thirty-nine seventeen, a resolution approving the certified survey map request, uh, CS twenty-one thirty-nine dash seventeen by Ron Kloss, agent for Joe and Karen Redden, to divide a property associated with fifty-three twenty-nine Lacy Road, Lot Two, CSM thirty-sixty, into two lots and two outlots.
Is there a second? Okay, I got Julia.
So this actually does the formal land division. Um, we have previously noted what the new zonings will be. So this is the CSM that comes out of the rezone. And I recommend approval. That was unanimous at plan.
And these, um, are dependent on each other, so, and there are other conditions as well. Anything else? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Carol. All right. Next is item four. I recommend approval of ordinance twenty-seventeen dash oh dash zero eight, which is RZ twenty-one forty-one dash seventeen, a zoning ordinance amendment approving a rezone request RZ twenty-one forty-one dash seventeen by Mark Langrave, agent for Breakaway Sports Center, to rezone a property at fifty-nine sixty-four Executive Drive, Lots Eight and Nine in the Fitchburg Business Park, from the BH Business Highway to the BG General Business District.
Second.
And basically, in a nutshell with this one, what we are doing is changing BH to BG to allow a use in the Breakaway Sports Building. They now have some unutilized retail space, and they would like to put a chiropractic office in the building, and by changing from BH to BG, that allows the chiropractic use. Um, the TID has been closed, so we do have the ability to rezone the properties. Um, staff approved, staff recommended approval, and plan commission approved unanimously. So I recommend approval.
Yeah, I would add that, um, that this is very compatible with the zoning of some of the adjacent lots or of the same zoning district. Jake?
I would also add that in addition to chiropractic, it could, in addition to chiropractic, it would be sports medicine, which is a very comparable use to what's currently there.
Tony?
I was just gonna second that. I mean, Matt Lombardino's had some similar uses, I think, in needs over the years, so I, I'm all for this. I think he's been a great, uh, you know, uh, employer here in the city, so I see this as being, hopefully, a no-brainer.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right.
So item number five, on behalf of the plan commission, I recommend approval of twenty-seventeen dash oh dash zero four and Plan Commission Resolution PCR zero-two-seventeen. This is a plan commission resolution, which is a resolution adopting and recommending an amendment to the Northeast Neighborhood Plan, part of Appendix A to the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Fitchburg and Dane County, and an ordinance adopting this amendment for the Northeast Neighborhood Plan, part of Appendix A to the Comprehensive Plan for the City of Fitchburg and Dane County, Wisconsin.
Second.
Yeah, uh, this is the point that Phil would like to speak, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Identify yourself.
Changing it up a little bit. Um, Patrick's gonna put up a, a map of, of the neighborhood, so I can explain a little bit more about what this is all about. Um, is there a, is there a pointer?
Yep, I have one right here.
There used to be one on the table.
That's all right.
As we were going through, um, the value engineering of this, uh, community to bring it forward, um, it is a very complicated community to, to, um, maneuver around to make sure that everything falls the way the Public Works Department would like to see, as well as the Planning Department, as well as us creating what I think will be a, a very, um, attractive neighborhood. And one of the issues that, that came up during this is the, the depth of sewer. Uh, the top left corner of this map shows where Meadow View, um, comes in from the town of Dunn. The sewer line is actually on the north side of Meadow View, and that would be actually in the town of Blooming Grove. So everything needs to drain to that location. What we ran into is from the, you could see the dotted, the dashed lines that are running to the southeast. Uh, there's, it's, it's a very sizable ridge that runs through there that would cause, in essence, the, uh, sewer depth to be forty feet plus deep. And it's not only expensive, but it's also something that Public Works really does not want, um, their personnel to be going down that far to make any repairs. And plus, there are, as you can see, there are streets in that area. Uh, if there was ever a leak, it would probably wipe out the entire street and sidewalks in that area. Well, thank you.
So while Phil's firing that up, uh, north is on the left.
Yeah. North is over here. This is Larson Road. There's Goodland Park Road. So that ridge is right in here. And so what that caused is the gravity, if it was gonna be a gravity flow sewer, it would have to reach those depths we were talking about. Um, if it were running along the right-of-way along Larson Road, it would basically wipe out Larson Road. It would have to be that wide of a cut. So we came up with an idea of, which is used quite frequently in Dane County area, of using a, a lift station. And while lift stations are not, uh, typically used in the city of Fitchburg, they are used in many of the surrounding communities. Um, so in working with Public Works, working with plan, with the Planning Department, we came up with an area, this location right here is where the lift station will go. So everything will be at pretty much traditional, um, depth with respect to sewer line, uh, will drain to that area and then be, um, pushed out, um, in, in a regular, um, depth sewer main. This will also serve the area outside of our boundaries. It will serve the, most of the Northeast Neighborhood with the exception of areas to the north to McCoy Road, which would be served by the, um, the main on the other side of the ridge. So areas that, uh, the Osborne property, as well as anything down here to the southwest, would be served by this particular, uh, lift station. And through our property, uh, or the neighborhood that will become, uh, this community, uh, will have oversizing of sewer, uh, lines as well as water lines to accommodate, uh, the area outside of our boundary. Um, so I, that's primarily what I wanted to show you, so you could see why we were, we were making this change. If you have that other photo, this is what it, what one of these lift stations looks like on the outside of, as you may see it from the street. Well, you have to turn your head to look at it, I guess.
Hang on, we have this technology.
You might have the wrong person dealing with the technology. There you go. Okay. Well, if you're leaning on your side in the road, this is what that lift station looks like. Now, this is out in Midtown. Uh, what we want to do is, we'll, we'd like to put a, um, a building over this. Uh, there will be some other, um, well, you can see a lot of this, these are, these are, uh, parts of the mechanical, uh, operation of it, and we want to have those inside, not just for aesthetics, but also to maintain them over a long period of time. So as you can see, it's not, it's, everything, virtually all of it is under, underground, uh, and mainly, this is a, a radio, I believe it's a radio, uh, transmitter, so that Madison Met can, um, monitor the usage. There's generators, there's, uh, jets and pumps and so on that are, that are all here. Uh, the generator, of course, in case the, the power goes out and you want to continue that, that flow. So, uh, I think the city now is going to be working with a consultant. We're gonna be meeting with, with, um, Public Works and the city's consultant, I think, next week to start, um, finalizing the, the specifications of this, of this piece of equipment. And it will be put in, in the first phase, uh, of this development. It'll be there from that point forward. Uh, it's, it's an extraordinary, um, cost that will, again, serve the entire community here, but outside of it, as will the line, the, the, the main that comes in from, from, uh, Meadow View all the way over this, this whole area here. This is all parts of second and third and fourth phase, but this line still has to come in to service this initial phase. So, any questions?
Questions for Phil?
So that's the change.
Okay, um, I'll give Tony and then Jake.
Thanks, Steve. Um, I'm gonna put on my Julia hat here for a second. I'm just gonna ask, um, you said there's an extraordinary cost, and I guess I'm curious how we handle this, because I'm not sure when we pay for this and how it gets paid for, if it gets paid for by levy, if it could pay for by borrowing, or somehow it's a cost associated
I can, I can answer that. I, um, there's no, the Public Works has not, has not allocated any funds for this. So what we've, what we've agreed to do is, uh, um, in the two-thousand-eighteen, nineteen capital improvement plan or in their budget, they will, they'll, by then they'll have a number. What can be done is, the, the flows can be calculated. They're all estimated by the, the neighborhood plan of what the calculations would be, is the estimate, and that's what's determining the size of this facility. And of course, what this community's, uh, requirements will be, will be offset. That would be our responsibility. Whatever is over and above that, that's the discussion we would be having with Public Works. So the next budget of, I would imagine, next capital improvement plan, there might be something in there from Public Works saying X dollars for the Taravessa Lift Station. By, and by the way, the, the maintenance, uh, costs of this, uh, is roughly, I think Tom Hubble had, had gathered the numbers of about sixteen thousand dollars a year to operate it, which would also take care of the electricity for it as well as the maintenance. With what we'll be generating in this neighborhood over time, we'll make that look pretty small.
Jake?
You just answered two of my questions, so I'd have a comment, um, in this-
We're dedicating a lot of parkland here too, Jake. Is that, is that your third question?
Uh, I, and I thank you for that. Uh, I saw, uh, a really clever way that people disguise these, or pump stations, uh, water pumping stations in a historic district, and I believe it was in New Orleans. I could be wrong. It's in that area, where they actually built a facade of a house where you go by and it looks just like a house, and it's beautiful, and it has this big station inside just for working. And again, I know this is cart before the horse, but that would be a really nice way to make it not look like a big metal box in the middle of your neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that, I think the, um, Public Works has done a good job with, with their pump stations around here, um, helping them blend in. Do we have to, I don't know if we have to commit for architectural approval on that, but we'll leave that up to Corey.
We'll work that out for down the road.
Smart code, you don't need any, I don't think.
Well, you can put a condo above it and live above your station.
Well, that's been thought about. There's two flat opportunities there.
I know that, uh, since this station will use lots of electricity, that Erica will want to be talking to you about solar access. All right, um, any other questions for Phil? I have no other regents, registrants, so, um, uh, council discussion. We have a motion to approve, and again, this will be the approval of the ordinance. We have a motion to approve, and again, this will be the approval of the ordinance, which will be consistent with the Plan Commission resolution that's already been passed. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Carol?
All right, item number six, I recommend approval of Ordinance 2017-0-05, and Ordinance amending Chapter 23, Smart Code Zoning Ordinance of Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances relative to Table 2G dot three, and Table four relative to Thoroughfares.
Second.
Very good. I have no registrants, although our, one of our smart code wizards, Susan, is here if we have any questions. Carol?
So, just quickly, this ordinance amendment corrects an error in Table two, which is related to this T4 side setback, and it also modifies the thoroughfare assembly where you can, the thoroughfare assembly currently requires the use of tree wells and T zones, but Terrevesse has requested to use continuous planters instead of tree wells in some of the T3 and T4 areas. So, the staff has reviewed it, and they believe that this would be an acceptable treatment, and then we're correcting the error in Table two, so it'll be, the setback is gonna be changed to a three-foot minimum, except in the case of a common or shared wall. So, staff and Plan Commission recommend approval of those changes.
And just as a comment, this is a general change to our ordinance, not a change for the specific developer.
Yep, we have found pretty much that every smart code development we've done so far, we've made some, you know, we're learning as we go, so we're finding little tweaks here and there where we think there's, yep, opportunities for fine-tuning, as Dorothy just said. So, yes, this will be a general change that will benefit all.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's good.
All right, item number seven is Ordinance 2017-06, and on behalf of the Plan Commission, I recommend denial of the change to Ordinance 2017-0-06, and Ordinance amending the professional office BP District to allow churches as a conditional use.
Is there a second? Thank you.
I just want to make it clear that this is not an institutional denial, this had been brought forward because there was someone in Forsyth Downs who wanted to have a church property in a BP zone, which currently does not allow churches. At the time of the referral, the church has changed their mind, so the, after a lot of Plan Commission discussion about taxable uses in business districts and whatever, we decided that, as a general principle, this was not a change that we wanted to pursue at this time, so since there was no particular incident driving it, we chose to deny the, to vote down the, we don't do this very often, to vote down the ordinance change, so I recommend denial, and if someone wants to bring something forward at a future date, they're welcome to do so. Just didn't seem prudent to just change it to just change it.
Questions for Carol, or discussion? Tony?
Just a question, where, Carol, is this parcel?
It's in the building next door, you have your office.
Yeah, it's over there, off Triverton, Forsyth Downs. It's off Triverton Pike.
Okay, well, then, nothing to worry about, thanks.
Up the hill from Starbucks to orient the general public. Okay, anything else from the Plan Commission?
No, I think, I think that's enough.
That was, that was pretty good haul. Those of you who wondered why we didn't have anything last time, we save it up and give it to you at the end of each month. Board of Public, oh, yes, thank you. Madam Clerk, I appreciate it. So, the motion is to deny, and an affirmative vote means we're denying. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, nothing else from Plan Commission, so on to Board of Public Works. Dorothy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About one quick one, and then three total. On behalf of Board of Public Works, I move approval of Resolution R 5817, authorizing purchase of a used dozer.
Second, finance approved.
Any explanation you want to provide?
The, buying the dozer had been, in a later year, we were going to buy a skid loader and shouldering machine, but we found that the dozer is more important at this time, so we're just swapping the two.
Our current dozer does not steer, so it's not so useful.
If all you need to do is go forward and back, we're good. If you need to turn, no.
Dozers need a dozer.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dorothy?
On behalf of the Board of Public Works, I move approval of Resolution R 6117, resolution approving 2017 solar initiative site selection and request for proposal.
And if I could clarify, Mayor, this is a, at this point in time, it is basically an RFP to select a vendor to facilitate this process.
Thank you. We need a second.
A second.
Thank you.
Finance approved.
Library?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The library board actually tabled it.
Coming back to you to discuss further next time. And RCC, Tony?
RCC approved.
Okay. We have before us our Sustainability Specialist Erica and Kurt Reinhold, who's going to speak first.
I just wanted to provide a quick overview of the resolution. As Pat mentioned, it's to approve RFP to get bids, and also approve some proposed sites to inform the RFP process. And once we have bids, we will bring the cost information with more concrete cost information back to council at a later date. We do have photos of the sites. If council would like to review the different site selections, there's a list in the referral packet. We're looking at the West Fire Station, 100 kilowatts, Public Works Maintenance Facility, the Police Evidence Building on South Fish hatchery Road, 30 additional kilowatts on the City Hall roof, 130 kilowatts on the library. We're also evaluating some well pumping stations, there are three that can accommodate solar arrays. We're looking at a mix of grants and city funding to finance the projects, with the remainder being made up with a tax financing arrangement. We will have more information on the grants in April through June, with the grant awards will be announced.
Anything to add, Kurt?
I think what has been said so far is perfect, but I'll add.
Just introduce yourself to the public and the council.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Kurt Reinhold from the Legacy Solar Co-op. I'm Managing Director of the Co-op, and have a history of working on tax financing to help nonprofits and municipalities lower their overall cost if they're looking to pursue putting solar on their buildings.
And I understand you may have some experience in a municipality near here.
Not too far away, starts with an M.
All right. Questions on the presentation? Tony?
I just want to clarify something, and for those of you who don't know, I've gotten very involved with solar, especially over the last year. I joined the Co-op, so when it comes to matters of money, I will always recuse myself and not vote, but I am happy to vote on things like this, which is basically RFPs, all to be available to answer questions, because I'm a big fan, and when I got reintroduced to Kurt last year by a very smart lady who's sitting in front of us, Erica, I decided that this was a terrific way for not-for-profits, libraries, schools, municipalities to get a lot more renewable energy. I'm a big fan and have been in that business for 15 years, but am now more active with the Co-op, so go team.
I have a question either for Erica or for Tony, I guess. What I'm wondering is, is I know the library tabled this, and if for some reason one of these sites would not work out, does this RFP offer the flexibility so that if we would want to put it on the East Fire Station when it's built, or on the lift station, as we just talked about, will there be flexibility within this, or are these sites tied in?
Yes, I think there will be flexibility. We, the goal that council laid out last fall was to fund 10% of the municipal energy use, which is about 375 kilowatts, so the proposed sites equal that amount. You'll notice, most of the grants are for 2017, and there will be additional grant opportunities for 2018 for East Fire Station as well.
But even in 2017, if we were to, if hit the pause button again for the library, we could go ahead with enough solar at other sites, including the well stations for 2017.
Great, thank you.
So, we do not have to, this authorization would not require us to put solar on all these sites, and furthermore, down the road, we could authorize the, or our successors could authorize other sites to be considered, but we are lending some concrete-ness to the process here, so that we can proceed with construction estimates.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion, seeing no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Dorothy?
On behalf of Board of Public Works, I move approval of Resolution R 6217, approving the agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of Uptown Crossing.
Second, finance approved.
All right, we have people here for this. All right, would that applicant team like to come forward, and you can speak in the order that you prefer. We'll have Jeff Lee and Brian Barrett and Trey Spinkman.
We actually registered to answer questions.
Very good. Oh, okay, so, so this is routine, that we have developer agreements. Public Works massages the boilerplate to include those public improvements that will be in each specific plat or subdivision, and so you have in your packet that agreement. Are there any questions for the applicants, or discussion? Pat?
Yeah, I also noted this at Finance Committee, this process, this development agreement was heavily vetted through staff with several reiterations of layouts within this neighborhood. Both of our city attorneys worked extensively and hand-in-hand with the developers, and we believe what you have in front of you is a good agreement, and that was the recommendation that was given me, to be, to me today by our city attorneys, and the staff recommendation is to approve this development agreement.
Any questions? Tony?
Just wondering, since we've got the guys here, if you could give us the Cliff Notes version of the, you know, improvements.
Sure. We are, a question came up earlier tonight at Finance, we will be putting in the extension of Nine Bark, that was, it's been talked about over the years, who's gonna put Nine Bark in, this project is putting Nine Bark in, and then the remaining loop road for the rest of the development. So, there'll be one interchange off of, or one access off of Sine, that's full four-way, and there'll be a right-in and right-out off of Sine as well.
Also, as part of this, it will be coordinated with this project, the city will put in the other railroad track crossing that we need. This will allow us, this will set us up to get all of our crossings that we need, so that we can undertake to apply for a federal quiet zone and stop the train whistles coming through this area. And we also are very grateful for your timing and this agreement, because it will get water to our fire station that we want to build at West Clayton, West Clayton Road. So, it's very opportune that the subdivision is being proposed at this time. Other questions or debate? Seeing none, then, all in favor of the resolution approving the subdivision improvement agreement, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming in. That concludes your action items, anything else from Public Works?
No.
Very good. Park Commission, Jake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Park Commission, I recommend approval of Resolution R-44-17, Dog Park Site Plan Approval, Northeast Corner of Irish Lane and South Fish Hatchery Road. Park Commission passed unanimously. Second, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. We have some folks here, so I have Patrick Chaney registering on behalf of just himself in support of the matter. I have, come back to Rachel, Amy Steger registering in support. She says, adding a dedicated off-leash dog park to our community would alleviate pressure on Fitchburg's existing parks. In terms of appropriate use and safety, as some residents allow dogs off-leash in unapproved areas, I ask the council to support a dog park for our community, and ask that the site location and plan for the space at Irish Lane be approved for this purpose. Thank you for that registration. And Rachel Burnham Holdener, how'd I do, Rachel? Not too bad, is here to answer questions if needed. I am very proud of all the work the city and the Fitchburg Dog Park advocates have done to make this project a reality. This is a much-wanted amenity, that will be a great asset to the community. I should say Rachel is a civil engineer and has donated a lot of her time to developing the site plan, so thank you for that. So, we have a motion, and are there any questions for Rachel? About the, Tony?
I just have one that is sort of broader than maybe Rachel could answer, but she's certainly welcome to take the first crack at it. And this just, you know, I want to speak on behalf of the few neighbors that I've had many conversations with, that, you know, were very concerned to begin with, I think a little, they've backed off a little on that, but I do think that one of the things we should try to respect is a need for a review after six to 12 months. So, I'm just curious if we have anything in the plan yet for that, or what we've talked about, just to make sure that, you know, after we get our feet underneath us on this, that we have a chance for people to come and speak out, and maybe to make improvements. And Scott, you can certainly speak to this, too, because this isn't the first time we've put in a new park, and we've had, you know, bumps along the way, so.
And maybe just to answer that question, certainly, this dog park process has been comprehensive and has taken some time, and part of the process is to reach out to the direct neighbors to find out what their concerns and issues may be, and the dog park advocates did a good job of doing that, and as they continued to work with their final design, they took those concerns under advisement and created fixes, if you would, to the concerns that these neighbors had, and I think, you know, with nobody being here really to be in objection to the design that we have currently now, I think is an indication that they're, they as neighbors who had the concerns are satisfied with the amendments and the changes that were made to the site plan to deal with their concerns and needs.
I mean, and just to clarify, I've had nothing but positive emails, and I know that, you know, there's overwhelming support for this, but just to be respectful, and I'm not talking about things that we've, you know, tried to plan for, because I think there's been a very, you know, good effort to do that, I'm just saying, there's always something that we've overlooked, or, you know, a big concern was safety and traffic and that type of thing, and noise, and I guess I'd just like an opportunity, it would be nice if we could say that 12 months from now, we'll at least revisit it once, and people have a chance to come in and say, here's what we've experienced, because they live there.
Certainly, certainly, certainly.
Carol?
Plan Commission also reviewed this, even though it wasn't officially referred to Plan Commission, we did review the site plan, and probably the overriding concern at Plan Commission is one that we've heard all along, which is the stormwater. There's been terrible issues with drainage in this area, and I think that was one of the big concerns the neighborhood had, was the stormwater plan, and where is this drainage gonna go? So, I know that you're working on a stormwater plan, can you give us an update on where you are with that? Because that is probably the most important concern that we have. Because that is probably the most important concern that we have functionally with this park, is the stormwater in the area.
Yep, and that makes sense, and that's something that we've really tried to incorporate into the plan. I received the 2009 study that was done about the Hillside Heights Pond area with the concerns about flooding. And I just got that today, so I only had this afternoon to review it. But I have a little bit of a summary of that compared to our stormwater design. I'll run through that real quick, but if it gets too in the weeds, just let me know, and I'll summarize a little quicker. There were two big different assumptions between the 2009 plan and the data that we used for our stormwater analysis. The first one was that the initial area that drains to the Fitchburg Dog Park area was bigger in our Dog Park plan than was outlined in the 2009 plan. So, it all comes down to, there's a driveway, and in our area, we assumed that all that driveway went through a culvert and into the Dog Park. In the 2009 plan, it goes to a separate area. So, our plan assumes that more water goes onto the site than what the 2009 plan did. Additionally, in 2009, the site was, had a house on it, and it also had a greenhouse or something, and there were lots of dirt paths, and there was some sort of structure, whether it was a greenhouse or shed, I'm not sure. So, all that impervious area was, went into the calculations for the 2009 study, and that impervious area was greater than what our proposed Dog Park will be. In our stormwater design, we compared it to the existing drainage today, which doesn't include any impervious surface except for the house just north of the area, and then the Lacy Road, that little area of roadway, and then the existing multi-use path. So, all of our calculations were compared to that existing today impervious surface, but the 2009 report had more impervious surface. So, we are reducing the impervious surface compared to that. So, if you looked at the 2009 study and our proposed design, we are reducing the impervious surface there. So, that's good news. So, those were the two assumptions that were different, so we're not necessarily comparing apples and oranges. But in both of those cases, our proposed design is in a better situation than the 2009 report. So, also, a question at the Plan Commission was how much of the Dog Park area contributes to the overall drainage to the Hillside Heights Park? The report stated that there was 76.9 acres that go to the Hillside Heights Park. The drainage area for the Dog Park site is 7.1 acres. So, it's 9.2 percent of the total drainage area to that pond, so we would only be able to improve the drainage that much, that 10%. The plan also had six recommendations for, to improve the flooding concerns. They included floodproofing the house, installing rain barrels and rain gardens on the private properties in that, the Hillside Heights neighborhood, installing a berm on the private land just to the east of the project to keep the water on the site instead of running into the park, bypass the flows on the east side of Irish Lane by adding pipes or regrading the ditches, enlarging the pond, and then constructing an infiltration facility on this Dog Park site. So, the suggestion was a point twenty, or quarter of an acre infiltration facility. Our plan, in addition to reducing the impervious area, includes a point one eight acres detention basin. So, while we're not including that exact recommendation, we are improving the stormwater design. As far as the actual stormwater design that we did, the proposed plan reduces flows and then also very small, but it does also reduce volume compared to existing today. So, I can give you numbers and calculations and stuff, but that was also assuming the exact ground cover that's out there today. The more plants we add, the more rain gardens we add, the better that situation will get. So, we are improving the stormwater issue there. I think by seeing in that plan that there was the additional impervious surface there, that by improving the site, we're really, we are helping the stormwater situation at that pond.
Because this area is a closed basin, correct?
It is in a closed basin, but the Dog Park site itself is not a closed basin. It would drain yet a lower place, which is a closed basin. Okay, I have Pat Stern and then Julia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I just, I promised my daughter I would do this. She saw the no-dog park sign on Fish Hatchery Road, so she offered to moderate a debate. So, if you guys are interested in that, I will certainly let her know. Secondly, Finance actually approved this with the staff recommended memo, so I would actually move to amend the approval, to take up the staff memo as a part of the resolution.
Take up the staff?
To take up the staff memo as a part of the resolution.
Oh, take it up?
Yes, so that would be to incorporate it as opposed to the initial memo, the one drafted by staff, would be the one that would be included as the final resolution.
Is there a second to Pat's motion? Thank you. So, do you want to highlight the changes, or does everybody else know about them?
I mean, they're in your packet. You should have seen them by now. I think the main point that I would make and echo, and I think on behalf of staff, is that by incorporating just the spreadsheet and then making this the controlling document that's drafted by staff, it provides clarity to staff, and staff feels that it covers all the items in question.
Okay, so, I think what you're saying is that we don't need the memorandum of understanding that's in here?
Well, there is a memorandum of understanding. I suppose the one that's, the staff recommended version is not called a memorandum of understanding. It's called the, an arrangement. If you want to be super technical about it. But I mean, there's a staff recommended version in orange in the upper right-hand corner of that document.
Yep.
And there's an FDPA recommended version on the initial one that was before us.
I see it now.
A month ago.
Has the Dog Park seen the language that you're talking about?
Well, at least somebody on the Dog Park has, so.
Okay.
One hour ago.
What page in the packet is the?
421.
So, 421 is the staff recommended?
Correct.
Because there's three.
So.
Okay.
Can you find that? I'm looking for it. Where it is in the packet?
Page 421.
So, can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Why would we be approving policy when we're approving the site plan? I mean, this seems like one of those times where we're rolling a whole lot of stuff into one vote, where we should be just approving the site plan because we haven't even approved a Dog Park yet, so.
Well, that's tonight, is my understanding, as we are approving the Dog Park.
Well, we're approving the site plan, but we haven't seen an operational plan or policy.
There's a number of hours for operating it in there as well.
Correct, but there's, correct. I mean.
So, Pat, are you?
Right, but we were told at Plan Commission that this is going to require the addition of a staff person.
That's not what we were told at Finance.
Okay, did you ask?
We did ask the question. We were told that other parks will just have to suffer, essentially was the short answer of that.
Yeah, operational, says 69 hours estimated annual.
Right.
Steve, I might be able to offer some clarification.
Okay, so, right now, we are on Pat, and I just want to get this thing up here. Are you going to be able to? Yeah.
421 in your packet, I understand problems. There it is. It's up. Pat, okay, she's got it.
So, the amendment is to, at least clarify, if not change, that this is the attached amendment, or the attached memo that we're approving, and that on the, if you go to the next page, Patty, that's the actual resolution, and it's got some yellow stuff there that can't really stand, that will have to be modified to really point to something that we want to.
We modify Finance as well, and I can let you know that.
Okay.
I mean, essentially, the first yellow highlight before the semicolon can stand, and then the second one became, if I'm remembering properly, and the MOU language would become, I believe I changed it to staff MOU language.
Something like, let's see.
If this is an agreement between the city and the Dog Parks Group, is this premature to be agreeing on this if the Dog Parks haven't read it or reviewed it as a group?
Are we still in testimony, Steve?
No.
Okay, sorry.
So, this is not an agreement because there's no place for anybody else to sign it, but it would be setting policy or operational procedures. There will have to be some kind of agreement signed with the Dog Park Advocates if the city wants to use the money that they have pledged and raised. I suppose they could gift it to us without any strings, but they probably have some things in mind that they want us to agree to as a city. Pat, do you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, I guess I don't disagree with the comment that was just made. In my opinion, this should probably go back to the Dog Park Advocates, be tabled at this time for reconsideration at a future meeting.
Well, I guess my argument would be that if we're prepared to offer this as the agreement, we might want to vote on that and say, we'd like to at least offer it to them.
Yes, you could do that.
That gives them direction.
Without.
And if they have edits that they want to make, they can, staff can always bring it back to us.
That's true. So, you would be agreeing on it without their necessary formal agreement.
Yep.
And that has the advantage that this council, which has been involved throughout the whole process, is at least making that tentative decision.
Yep.
All right, I have some other folks in the queue. Pat, are you done?
Yeah.
Julia?
Do I have a second, by the way? I forget. Okay.
Yeah, this is on the, this is on the, this is on the amendment to the main motion to adjust that highlighted language and include that staff memo as the thing being approved.
Can I make a motion, Steve?
No, not before we clear up this one. So, I've got Julia, Tony, and Carol in the queue. Do any of you want to speak on the amendment? Or do you want to save it for the main motion? You are not in the queue. Julia, did you want to speak on the amendment?
I want to ask a question.
What?
I want to ask a question, I don't know.
Yeah, and you're in the queue. Go.
My question is, you mentioned about all the issue with the stormwater, and you mentioned about if we need to do like an infiltration study or work. Who is going to pay that? Is part of this, the estimate that you gave us, Scott, today, is part there? The $17,000?
Let's hold that because that's really on the main motion. We'll come back to it, okay? I just want to get this amendment cleared off. So, what you're talking about is on the main motion of?
Okay, I'm confused, okay.
So, Tony, did you have anything on the amendment?
Nope, just the main.
Okay, Carol, did you have anything on the amendment? Jake?
Yes.
On the amendment?
I would like to, and this is speaking on behalf of myself, just from my reading over the staff recommended MOU. I have no problem with anything specific that Misty put in there. I think in general, it's congruent with the MOU presented by FDPA. However, it is much less specific. For instance, and I brought this up at the Finance Committee, the previous agreement, and we've already talked to staff about this, for instance, this kiosk, we had a donated kiosk that was built by a local Eagle Scout candidate, beautiful kiosk, worked with staff on that, got administrative approval from Tom on it, talked to Scott about it. And the plan is, the city is installing that. We are donating that, become city property, city's installing that. Right now, that's not spelled out in this MOU, it's kind of vague. And we were going to work as volunteers to help, the Eagle Scout was going to help with that. But I don't want FDPA, and I don't think it's good faith to go into this and then suddenly, you know, the chance that Misty would come and say, well, Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates needs to pay for that because it says in there that they're doing the kiosk. And there's other really specific things in there. And again, it's not incongruent with what Misty says, but it's in addition to it, and it's, this is all to avoid a conflict. It's not to be sneaky about it, it's to be obvious about it, to set forth that relationship. So, if we agree to the staff recommendation, I have, I have one big thing I would like to add. And again, I don't know if I can modify this or if we have to vote on it before I bring up a proposal to them.
Yeah, let me just ask you, do you feel that the staff memo precludes us taking up the MOU down the road?
No.
Because we're going to have, if I sign an MOU, or my successor signs an MOU on behalf of the city, there'll be a resolution authorizing that signature. So, we'll still, so, I have not read this. Does it preclude having that future MOU?
No. And we could, we could pass it and say, staff will work it out with Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates as long as it's nothing that's outside of what's already been agreed on. I'm fine with that. I just don't want to pass something that then goes against what the entire good faith agreement that we've been working on so far.
Okay, on the amendment, I have.
I have a question on the amendment.
I do not see your slip, and I am sorry about that. So. Can I speak quick? Yeah, thank you. Pat, go ahead while we do this.
I'll yield it, Jason, you can go ahead.
I just, I think that, well, first of all, the Dog Park Advocates have more people than just Jake involved, and so I would be in favor of what had been proposed, of letting them go back and review this, you know, and bring it back the next council meeting, where this is going to be the same council meeting, same council regardless of the elections, the next council meeting, so.
Okay, so, so that is, so where we are right now is on Pat's amendment to clear this up, and I still have, I don't have anybody else speaking on the amendment. Are you ready to vote on the amendment?
Could you clarify?
So, the amendment basically is to clear up the highlighted language to refer to the staff part of the memo. It does not prohibit the further execution with more specificity of an MOU down the road, and it does not pass the main motion, which we still will have before us.
So, I, okay, so where I'm confused is to something Jason just said, and that is, if we pass this, are we precluding a vote, are tabling in a vote in two weeks? Is Tony also jumping me in the queue?
What?
Is Tony also jumping me in the queue?
I forgot to.
I thought you just asked if we had any questions before the vote.
Okay, yes, hang on, Tony.
Okay.
If I missed you, go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, I yielded to Jason because he had a comment.
Okay.
So, what I would say, I guess, is a little bit to Jake, there has been no policy decision. So, to say that we've been operating under the original MOU, I think is a little bit of a misnomer because no policy decision's been made on that memorandum of understanding to date. So, I think that we're, again, cart before the horse, and, you know, I will yield, and if we want to say, okay, we're going to take this up in two weeks, once we've had a chance to view, read this, and I understand from the Dog Park perspective, but I'm a little saddened to hear that the mayor himself hasn't even read the packet of information that's before us, and that there seems to be a lot of confusion and that other people haven't read this either. I don't really understand why we have information in a packet if we're not going to review it prior to meetings. That's not a comment on the Dog Park, that's a comment on this body itself.
So, it's not your main?
Oh, oh, that's the first not your main I've heard out of the mayor's chair, so I appreciate that.
Diane wanting to speak, I mean, she was a.
Yeah, I'm sorry, would the body be willing to hear from Diane?
No.
She, I saw her hand something over there, so I don't know what happened to her.
I handed it to the mayor.
I'm going to vouch for Diane, she is very thorough.
I'll recognize you, Diane, please.
Well, does Diane want to speak on the amendment or the main motion?
Well, we should be, you should be rewinding it to the beginning. Do you want to talk about the amendment, or what do you want to talk? I do not.
I originally wanted to talk about the whole topic, but if you want to talk about the MOU, I can abbreviate what I was going to talk about. My name is Diane Strack. I live at 3099 Barrington Hills Court in Fitchburg. I'm a member of the Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates, and I'm speaking on their. I'm a member of the Pittsburgh Dog Park Advocates, and I'm speaking on their behalf. I'll, if you want, I'll cut to, to the chase and just talk about the memorandum of understanding. I listened to the council meeting two weeks ago, um, and I agree with the council that, um, the memorandum of understanding was putting the court, the cart before the horse. I felt the same way, however, if you remember way back when, when we started, when the dog parks, uh, came to the committee of the whole and we presented to the, to the council, and, um, the council had some concerns and they weren't ready to decide on a site yet or to authorize a site. However, the dog park advocates still needed to start fundraising, uh, and we, and we needed to know what we were fundraising for, in case our donors would like to give in kind rather than cash donations. In addition, um, the, the council encouraged us to strike up a relationship with Madison Community Foundation, which we did. However, um, since the city would be the conduit for the funds coming from the Madison Community Foundation as treasurer of the Pittsburgh Dog Park Advocates, I wanted to understand the process and what the city would require from us for documentation before they would either make a purchase or, or release funds for reimbursement. So I nee, I needed to get that part, um, in writing from the city, as well as we needed, we needed to define what we were raising funds to do. So that's why, um, the, the, the arrangement, which is the original memorandum of understanding, was, was drafted in October of 2016. That was reviewed with Scott Endel and Misty Dodge. They gave their input, they made some, some changes which we incorporated, we sent it back to them, and they approved it. And we have been relying on that since last October.
And Mark Sewell, too.
I, I don't know about that. Then, um, recently, I think it was the beginning of February, Misty Dodge had some questions and, and felt that she needed the, the arrangement to be a little bit more specific. And so, um, and you remember the last council meeting, you were talking about allocating funds or allowing funds for some, some stormwater studies, and there was some discussion about that. Well, so we went back to the arrangement and we added an addendum to it, um, to, to make things more specific so that there would be less confusion going forward, still preserving the original arrangement, because that's what we've been relying on. So we added it as an addendum. I noticed in the packet when I was going through it that, that staff also submitted a memo, memorandum of understanding, um, and I'll, and I'll tell you a couple of problems that I see with it, and you can obviously vote as you, as you will, but it refers to the cost estimate that Scott Endel prepared. He didn't prepare that to be support for memorandum of understanding, and if you notice on it, it's marked preliminary. So it's a fluid document. Those numbers could change depending on, on the cost, the actual cost that come in, the bids that come in, um, and in that case, with, if they do change, what does that mean? The allocation changes? I mean, what kind of a memorandum of understanding is not going to be set? It's going to be changed based on a fluid document that's preliminary. That, I, in my opinion, the staff suggestion creates more confusion and more uncertainty. I appreciate all your time. I had more to say about the dog park, but if, if you want to focus on the memorandum of understanding, I just wanted to explain why we're at this point. Thank you.
So this is, this is still on the amendment? Go ahead.
Okay, my question is, you know, you mentioned about the memorandum of understanding that it was approved by Misty, by Scott, but Mark Sewell, because, but we are the one we need to approve that. And we saw that this memorandum tonight. It was in this package, we haven't seen it before. And we, the council, it's our duty to approve, and the staff is to execute. So this is why there is a, for me, it's a conflict of, you know, of duties, you know, because we as a council, we should be able to approve the memorandum. And this was the first time that we saw it in the package. You're talking about since October, you have been going, you know, and, but we saw it in this package the first time.
Two, two things in response to that. When, when I corresponded with Misty on this in October, she never indicated anybody else needed to approve it. I asked her if, if she was in agreement with this, and she said yes. She never said that it needs council approval or it needs, she never said that. And, and the other point, um, I should have written a note on it. The reason that you didn't, the reason that you didn't, you haven't seen it sooner, we gave it to Misty sooner, and she couldn't convert it to a PDF. So it wasn't in your packet at your last meeting, because, not because she didn't have it, it was there to be in the packet, but it didn't get included because she couldn't put it in a PDF.
Okay, um, so we are on council discussion of the amendment right now, and the proposal is to, by Pat, is to make the resolution point to the staff recommended arrangement. So is, anyone else want to speak before we vote on that amendment? Carol?
I would like, Pat, to give us some clarification on the difference between an MOU, a contract, and an arrangement. Because we're talking about three different verbiages here, and I think we've gone from an MOU, which I know that our city attorney dislikes those, because they have the perception of being a contract when they aren't actually a contract. So where are we as far as an MOU versus, I mean, obviously the staff recommendation is to have an arrangement, not an MOU. Why was that language landed on?
Well, a memorandum of understanding is a mu, much softer version than a con, than a contract. It, it assumes there's an understanding by, uh, both parties without, as you see, there's no signature line on these type of documents. A contract is, is something that is reviewed and, and agreed upon thoroughly by both sides. And an agreement, which we were recommending, i- is more, uh, is just another word for a contract. It's an agreement between two parties.
But it's not an actual contract?
It's, it could be perceived as a contract because it has the potential for signature, signatures from both parties.
So we're recommending doing an agreement, not an MOU?
This says arrangement.
Arrangement, arrangement, same thing, arrangement, agreement.
Why not, we renamed it, so I was curious as to why we renamed what we're doing.
Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, all in favor of Pat's amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no?
No.
Roll call. We are voting to incorp, to modify the resolution where the yellow highlight is, to point very specifically at the staff recommended arrangement on page four twenty-one of the packet. And, uh, the actual words to be used will be figured out by staff.
All right, Arata Frata? Carpenter?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Hartman?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Poole?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, now, this is the main motion. I would remind my colleagues that if there's a motion to table, then we're done for tonight, so we should try to get any discussion forward that guidance for staff or dog park advocates before we table. Uh, Jake, then Jason?
I would.
Oh, wait, I should, I have Tony and Carol in the queue, uh, Julia, and Tony and Carol in the queue from before, and Jake and Jason. So Julia, do you have anything on the main motion?
Yes, my question was regarding the, we need to, um, to do more work in the stormwater, you know? So is that one, um, the seventeen thousand dollar that is allocated in the budget, is going to cover all of that, or is, I don't know how much it costs that, but is, you know, seventeen thousand dollars is going to cover the engineer part, the parking lot plan, the stormwater? So is, if we find something bigger, you know, that we need to fix.
So, so the, the city hired?
Are we having back and forth?
Oh, sorry.
So, are you asking a question of her or of staff, or?
I don't know who.
I think that what we're doing here is going with estimates right now.
Someone can answer?
Yep. Pat, do you want to try that? Are these hard numbers or estimates? And how do we deal with it later?
Maybe Scott.
These, these are estimates.
Right. So there's no contract to construct that we're, we're adopting right now.
Okay.
We're approving the site plan, but then the next step would be to get estimates for construction, or bids.
Bids, yes, these are estimates.
Hard numbers.
We believe they're good estimates, but until we go out to bid, we don't know.
Okay.
If I, if I may.
I have, uh, yes.
There is one, the, uh, the five, the five-foot woven wire is not an estimate, that's an actual bid that we did receive.
Okay. I have Tony, then Carol will be after that.
I'm going to speak to, uh, nine to ten percent of the water issue, uh, based on what Rachel said. I did go over and talk to two of the three immediately affected neighbors who are on the pond at the bottom of Hillside Heights, and we're very fortunate to have Mark Hodel, who's been with the city long enough to have been the guy who did the original dredging over there, uh, and did some work to find out that we have a lot of clay, and it is a closed basin, somebody asked that question earlier, and I know that's been said before, but what it means is, is that the only way for that water to escape from there is evaporation. There's no way out other than that. And what we have is a kind of a nice-looking pond with some, you know, some, I don't know if these are native species in there, probably a lot of invasives. I noticed that Bill's here, and he could probably speak to the whole water issue, but I think what I've learned is, is that we would probably be, um, uh, best advised to go to the DNR on this one and possibly widen the surface of that pond, because there is a buffer there now, and then we're actually mowing and maintaining grass around there, if I'm not mistaken, is that true, Scott, around the perimeter? It doesn't get a lot of use from the outside, but actually there might be funds available, I've been told from the DNR, especially if we were going to do something like a boardwalk around it. But we could clear up a bit of the, um, problem there for the neighborhood on the drainage if we could just expand the, uh, the footprint of the surface area of the pond. So, um, I've also been told that no water's going to be escaping from the dog park, so that nine or 10% contribution's going to go away, so that'll help, of course, too. But as it relates to the dog park, that's what I've learned, and, uh, only one of the two neighbors was concerned. He did show me some pretty, uh, intense pictures that, you know, demonstrated that there was a flooding problem there, but I think, you know, it's not something that's attributable really to the dog park, and he even admitted that by the end of the conversation, so, anyway, that's what I had to say.
Carol?
So I guess, my whole take on this entire process is that I feel like we have sneaked this through piece by piece by piece, and I don't mean sneak it through like nobody wants it, I mean sneak it through like everything's been very cryptic. Why does it not say in our resolution that we are approving the dog park finally tonight? Because obviously we are. So it should say that. It shouldn't just say that we're approving a site plan, because one could presume from that that we're saying, okay, if we have a dog park, this is what the site plan will look like. But that doesn't sound like what we're doing tonight. And my biggest concerns that I've had in this entire process, I still have not seen yet, which are the policies, the actual costs, I mean, we have some estimates from staff, and obviously you got different information at Finance than we got at the Plan Commission, and an operational plan. Have we worked out all of the details on how this is going to work? Who gets called when someone's dog gets bitten? Who gets called when, who's going to check the licenses when people come in? How are we financing this? You know, I would have expected something like this coming to us would have come very similarly, like a neighborhood plan. We want to have a dog park, this is what it's going to look like, this is how we're going to operate it, this is how we're going to run it. Instead, we heard at one meeting, oh yeah, we're going to sell licenses, and that's going to cover the entire cost of the thing, and we're going to be part of the Dane County Dog Park. Well, that turned out, we can't do that, and it isn't true. So I guess, I don't feel like I've been given the information that I've asked for and that I've wanted through this process. I feel like we're just kind of, well, let's just approve a dog park plan, and now all of a sudden, oh, well, the MOU's in there, just like when we talked about the stormwater at the last meeting. Oh, well, wait a minute, there's an MOU in here. Well, wait a minute, what are we doing here? I would have liked to have seen a more orchestrated process that came through with the more part, with all of the parts and pieces in place. And I know that part of this was driven by the fundraising piece of this, that they had to know what they were raising money for. We went through that with the splash pad, we didn't have as much confusing information. I just think this has been really clunky. That said, this is obviously very popular, it's something that the people on the east side of Pittsburgh feel that they need to have. People in my district and Dorothy's district won't benefit from it, and I've heard a lot of people say that, um, maybe we should be worried about parks for people instead of dogs, but I'm a dog owner, I love my dogs, and I understand that people need a place for them to go, especially when we have neighborhood covenants that prevent fences in people's yards. The one thing that I would ask this council, because I don't know if I will, if we will have an operational plan that will come up here before my service is over, but what I would ask you to do when you're considering the operational plan is to look at the conditional use, um, determiner, determining factors. When you're looking at coming up with policies of, like Tony was talking about, let's do a review in six months after the park's been open and see what the impacts have been on the neighborhood. Our conditional use, our zoning ordinances, talk about conditional uses, which this is, a dog park is a conditional use of this area. There are six criteria that we look at to determine whether it's in the interest of everyone involved to have that conditional use there. I won't take the time to read them because it's getting late, but they are in our zoning ordinances, and they include things that the, such as, I will read the first one, that the established maintenance and operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental or endanger the public safety, morale, comfort, or general welfare. So if there are sanitation issues at this park, I expect there to be something in place to address those things. I know that people are always shot out of a cannon when it's volunteers, but what happens three years from now when half of them move or the dog park advocates aren't around anymore, and the city is having to pick up all this stuff? I want to make sure that we have a good operational, solid operational plan in place so that if we have this MOU or agreement or contract or whatever it ultimately ends up being, that there is backup for that as to what if that doesn't happen? What's our, what's our plan B? And how are we going to address these issues? Who's going to do the licensing? Is Patty's office going to sell these licenses? Do we know what the impact on the clerk's office is going to be? And there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I just seriously, truly believe that the resolution should have said that we are approving the dog park tonight, not just the site plan. So I'm going to support this, but because of public demand, but I think this could have been handled a lot better.
Before we go on to the next speaker, Carol, do you want to propose an amendment to make, make that change to the language?
To recommend the?
To, to change the resolution to approve the dog park?
Yes.
So, um.
We might as well just do it. I mean, it, otherwise it's going to come up every time. So I would propose to change the resolution to say, uh, resolution R forty-four seventeen approves a dog park at the northeast corner of Irish Lane, southeast, at the dog park and site plan approval.
So why don't we just re, remove site plan from the title?
Why not add the "and"?
I just put an "and" in between dog park and site plan.
Okay, so we have an "and" in the title?
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment to their motion?
Well, let, let's just make sure we know what it is, and then we can ask if.
So it would read, "A dog park and site plan approval for the northeast corner of Irish Lane and South Fish Atrey Road."
Yep.
Yep.
And, and Carol, if you would read the be it therefore resolved clause, do you feel that that covers it?
Hang on.
The council auth, excuse me, the council authorizes the Parks Department to begin construction on this dog park facility at the northeast corner, and so on. So I think that that doesn't need to be changed, I think that clearly authorizes a dog park.
I think it does too, but I think the title should reflect the.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'm going to take that as an amendment to change the title, and is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good. So we're on the main motion, and Carol is done for now. Jake?
What about?
Oh, I have Jake, Jason, and then me.
Yeah, I guess, um, I am very comfortable if we want to take the MOU out of this language right now, and we vote on the. out of this language right now, and we vote on the plan and approve the dog park. And I will bring forward an MOU that FDPA has discussed with Misty. And I think that's the best way to go for that. The reason we brought forth the MOU is Misty said, "Give, send us an MOU." So I was doing her wishes, and it was sent over a month ago, on the 21st.
So for clarification, what you're proposing is, is that we would approve the use and the site plan tonight? And that maybe the MOU could come for, or arrangement, agreement, whatever it is, would come forward at a later date with the operational plan that this council will have to vote on? And the financial plan.
So in the resolution, it already states Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates in the partnership, but it just doesn't get into the weeds and the specifics of that. So that would already be approved with the dog park. What I am saying is the specific wording on the MOU to, to just strip that "and MOU" language out of the resolution. And that I would bring forth something that Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates and Misty agree on for our next meeting. So I, I will bring that up as a, um, as a friendly amendment.
Well, let's, let's not talk about friendly amendments. But we already amended the thing that Patty has highlighted.
Correct.
To point to the, um, the staff arrangement.
Correct.
Now, Jake is proposing to remove that, and probably...
And that it would come forth. Because if, if that's holding it up, I want to talk dog park here. And if MOU needs to be refined, let's get it right. Let's do it right.
Right. But, but the point is that we're not talking about whether we're going to bring it forward later. That's a possibility. All we're talking about is removing this language.
Correct.
Those three words, or, or the whatever. Okay. If everybody understands that, is there a second? To, to take out any reference to the arrangement by removing the three highlighted words there?
Second.
Okay. So, an agreement. We needed the MOU previously because we didn't get the authorization to go ahead with the stormwater plan.
Correct.
Now we have that separately. So we may not need the MOU until it's more worked out.
Yeah, and, and the specific agreement is already in the resolution. We're just further defining that with the agreement. Let's, let's just say the agreement, not the MOU.
Yep. So, holding those three people that are still in the queue for the main motion, does anybody else want to speak on this amendment?
Yeah, I guess on this amendment, I'm just concerned. I mean, the last time we were going to delay a decision on this, we were told that if we delayed it, the dog park was dead, and dead, dead, dead. So if we delay for this, is it also dead?
Nope.
So what's the difference between delaying for this and delaying for other reasons?
As a very specific answer to that, when you delay a decision on setting up a contract for an engineer to look at something for a site plan that's to go before the Plan Commission two weeks later, and that doesn't happen, then tonight's vote doesn't happen. And, and everything gets kicked back. So that was a very different situation. Uh, I, if we want to keep the MOU in there, I'm fine with that. If, if you vote down my amendment?
Okay, Jake?
I will just propose other, other language.
Anything else, Pat?
I mean, I think we can, we can monkey with, with MOUs all night. I mean, we have one that we've picked. We can move forward. And we can have them either accepted or not accepted to staff. So whether we want to keep changing motions, and motions, and motions, and motions all night, that's fine. I would suggest we just pick a path, and let's vote on this thing, because I think we have quite a bit of agreement. And I don't think we need to beat any more dead horses tonight, because we've done plenty of that already.
All right. This is on the motion to remove any MOU from this resolution.
Thanks, Steve. So this is for Pat or anybody who is there, because it would be nice if Misty was here. I want to kind of wrap my head around why she purposely wanted to take out an agreement or arrangement or whatever we call it, but something with signature lines in it, and put in something that's a little bit more malleable and a little bit, you know, uh, less specific. I mean, can somebody tell me, you know, the MOU idea, I think, could be valuable? Um, and I'm just curious, even though Mark Sewell doesn't like it, in this case in particular, since this is a work in progress. But Pat or somebody who was there, do you know why she wanted to do that?
Nope.
We don't have that information right now. But I can tell you that we're going to have to sign something to get the money from the dog park advocates. And there's going to have to be council authorization for the mayor to sign that. So it's not like we're not going to have some kind of agreement.
Yeah, let's just separate if we vote on the park.
All right, then. On the motion to remove a reference to the arrangement, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Noes have it. So we're still working with the staff memo. Now, on the main motion, I still have Jake.
Could I ask for a roll call on that, because that's, that sounded like a four-four to me.
Yes, you may. Madam.
Julia Radafarada. Carpenter.
No.
Gonzalez.
No.
Hartman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Karosi.
Aye.
Cool.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
It's a five to three vote.
Okay. So I have Jake, Jason, and me on the main motion. Jake, do you have anything to say on the main motion?
Sure. I'm, I, I have 12 emails I was going to read, but I believe most of us received those, so I'm not going to. But I received 12 emails in support of the park, several really good reasons. A lot of people who couldn't be here tonight. I want to, uh, speak, uh, briefly on Scott's worksheet, which was included, about ongoing expenses. I know that both Julia and Carol had asked for that, uh, probably a year ago. And, uh, I would like to note in there that there is 10 to 12 hours of work that is currently being done on that land, that is included in that worksheet. So really, when we look at the 69 staff hours, if you net out the 10 to 12, we're looking at 59, 57 to 59 staff hours per year, which is the difference. So I just wanted to make that clarification. I wanted to also mention, Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates have had extremely successful fundraising, um, efforts, and we are almost there. We have, uh, um, we're up to our 27,000 mark on our, on our little thermometer on our website. And we have a ton of pledges that, if we approve this tonight, will come in. And we will meet our end of, of the obligation, because people want this. People in the city want this. I gotta, um, he won't mind me saying it, but Dr. Zerba Pastor called me yesterday and said, "How can we make this happen? Let me give you $1,000 and set it up as a matching, matching fund." And, you know, people want this to happen, so.
Jason?
This, this is more of a question for, and I'm probably out of line in asking for Rachel and Diane. Do you feel comfortable going forward with an MOU or an agreement, whatever we want to call it, that you have not seen? I mean, or do you want, does the Fitchburg par- uh, dog parks want, uh, dog park group want an opportunity to look at this?
Can I, actually, I think I have a quick rejoinder to that, just that might clear it up. I think my intent with that was to provide clarity to staff with which one that they should present to the dog park. So there's plenty of opportunity for them to then negotiate and come up with a memorandum of understanding at this point. So we, I think what we have, in my opinion, and you guys can, are free to disagree. But I, I think that we, we're just instructing staff, here's, here's a baseline. Now go out and do the next steps.
Yeah, I agree with, I, I agree with Pat that this is not a take it or leave it to the dog park advocates.
All right. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, because they hadn't had a chance to weigh in, so.
Okay. I'm up now. I just wanted to say a couple of things here. We were thinking that the Plan Commission report should include conditional use and agri- uh, uh, architectural and design review, uh, reports, because they do not come back to the council. We forgot to do that in this case. But I would, I do want to note that, uh, Plan Commission, a week ago, did pass the architectural and design review and the, um, and the, uh, conditional use for this site plan, uh, with the condition that the stormwater management plan, which is not normally looked at by plan, only by staff, be satisfactory to staff. I wanted to clarify, um, I think it was Tony, talked about keeping the water on the site. 100% stay-on refers to the pre-development stay-on. So the same amount of water will come off the site, or potentially less, uh, down toward the pond as before. 100% stay-on does not mean that all the water stays on the site. With respect to making the pond bigger, actually, plants, uh, such as rain gardens, bio-retention swales, or even prairie, are better than a pond surface, because the plants actively transpire. So if we want more water to be, um, evapotranspired, we should have more plants, not more open water surface. And then the last comment I wanted to make had to do with Carol's concern about this thing coming forward piecemeal. For every project, you start out knowing nothing with lots of flexibility and zero investment. And as you move through a process...
Mr. Mayor, recall the question.
Second.
Get sick.
Let the record show that the mayor is not being allowed to speak. All in favor of ending debate?
Let the mayor, the chair of the commission, and has, does not get to speak. And we were done hearing your lecture.
All in favor of ending debate, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Eyes have it? All in favor of the main motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Anything else from Park Commission, Jake?
Uh, no, we're, we're looking at, uh, some forestry management plans, and we will see that coming up shortly. But, uh, I don't have anything else to report from Parks. Thank you.
Library Board?
The Library Board met, uh, what was that, Wednesday, March 15th? We had our last meeting. And, um, uh, I guess the biggest item of discussion from that meeting had to do with the resolution relating to the solar plan that we just passed about hour, hour and a half ago. The Library Board, at that time, uh, decided to table the resolution. There was, there were some concerns about the language. There are also some, uh, concerns that still exist from just the idea of putting the panels on the roof. And, uh, it was kind of a lengthy conversation, but they ultimately decided to table the resolution. But we just approved it. We also went over just kind of some in-house policies. Collection policy, uh, photocopy policy, code conduct policy. And, uh, one last item of note, the Friends of the Fitchburg Library had their used book sale. It was that weekend, um, of March 17th, that Friday, St. Patrick's Day. And they ended up raising 2,800 bucks, which is a pretty solid haul, once again. We've really gotten on a roll with the Friends, um, the last couple of book sales. And so that's all money that then goes right back into the library to purchase things that the library needs. So it's a really good cause. And, uh, the next book sale is going to be in June. So that'll be here before we know it. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Dan. Commission on Aging.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask at this time if we could amend the agenda to take up Item 11A1, so that we can let our people who are still in the audience...
Is there any objection to taking up 11A1 at this time?
Can I ask for unanimous consent to clear all of Item 11, then? And just get done with new business altogether?
Is there any objection to taking up all of 11 at this time? Seeing none? We are on Item 11A.
I will recommend approval of Resolution R-6917, a resolution to amend the previously adopted R-18516 and adopt the 2017 City of Fitchburg Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan.
Second.
We have some, thank you. We have some speakers this evening. Someone just handed a registration form with no name on it.
That would be Jay Hocken.
Oh, Jay? Way to go, Jay. I'll start out with Ron Buchholz. Ron is liking to speak in support of the matter. While he comes forward, Mary Buchholz is, um, registering and support, registering only in support of the matter. And, um, looks like you're making the same remarks as Ron, so do you want me to read them? Yes? Okay. Go ahead, Ron.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ron Buchholz, and my wife, Mary, and I reside at 2587 Monument Court in Wildwood South Neighborhood. One of the existing neighborhoods in Fitchburg developed without sidewalks. We've been residents of Fitchburg for the last 14 years. And I'd like to thank you, uh, for hearing my brief testimony tonight regarding Resolution R-6917 and the final draft, hopefully, of the 2017 Fitchburg Bike and Pedestrian Plan. As Mayor Arnold indicated, my wife is registered, and I'm here to testify regarding Agenda Item 11A1. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Pat Marsh and Patty Anderson, whoever else was involved in getting this item on the agenda, this, for this meeting, as an actionable item. We sat for two-plus hours, two weeks ago, wanting to find out that the agenda was set up in such a manner that there was going to be no vote taken. Hopefully, I have not, um, jinxed this, but we are in support tonight of the Resolution, uh, R-6917. It does two things. One is that it corrects, uh, it corrects a, uh, inconsistency between R-18516 and the bike-ped plan. And second, it does offer an opportunity for the alders to make a final vote to approve the 2017, uh, final draft of the, uh, Fitchburg Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. So I'd like to thank those people who are involved in making sure that this got on as an actionable item tonight. I am here basically to provide acknowledgement and recognition. I'd like to recognize the work done by the Community Design Group in Minneapolis for, and the city employees involved with researching, developing, and finalizing, um, the Fitchburg Bike and Ped Plan. It's an excellent planning document. It will serve the city well as we move forward and grow without, uh, having a detrimental effect on existing neighborhoods and the environment that we have, uh, we have here in Fitchburg, and for which many of us moved to Fitchburg. I'd also like to recognize the alders, who over the last several years have listened to our concerns and suggestions, uh, made by myself and other affected homeowners in the existing neighborhoods, as well as other Fitchburg citizens and taxpayers. We very much appreciate the fact that you have taken time to listen to us, to incorporate our concerns into both the resolution and the plan. We have looked over the plan, and the plan now contains all of the information, direction, and guidance that we are concerned about, and provides a, a long-term resolution to the issue of sidewalk installation in those existing neighborhoods. And we are extremely happy that that was redeveloped. I'd like to recognize all of you for your efforts in that. And thank you very much for this opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ron. I have Cheryl, these, and Jay. And Jay, did you want to speak? It's not checked.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Cheryl, and then Jay. But you can both come up.
I just registered.
Oh, sorry. Cheryl, uh, registers only in support of the matter. Thanks to all for your hard work. Sorry. Jay?
Good evening. My remarks will be very brief. First of all, I'd like to thank Ron for covering the bases, so to speak, on everything that I had intended to say. I will not repeat it. I do have a couple of other remarks, though. One is, I have been truly impressed with the infrastructure and the staff of the City of Fitchburg as we've dabbled in this topic for the past six months. And it's just been really refreshing to see the technology being deployed and other aspects of this, including these agendas that go out every two weeks. So, and the people that we've always contacted have always been forthcoming and very easy to work with. Sometimes there's been differing opinions, but it's always been a very professional approach. Everybody that I've ever been involved with on this is, has exhibited, and I really appreciate it. I also appreciate the council moving forward eventually to take care of this in a way that the outcome, uh, is totally acceptable to the people that I've worked with in my neighborhood, who have, um, expressed interest in this topic and been involved in it. And I just want to thank everybody for a very fine outcome here. Took a little longer than perhaps it should have, but we still got to where we need to be, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay. All right. We didn't have a motion yet, right? We do have a motion. Okay. Very good. So on Resolution R-6917, is there any further discussion? I would, um... I would... I would, I would, I would like to thank staff and the steering committee and everybody who's worked on this, including all the citizens. And sometimes I regret that so much bandwidth was spent on the sidewalks that perhaps other parts of the plan did not get that attention. But I think the rest of the plan is good, too, and I certainly will be grateful for a positive vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you. Research Park Limited Partnership.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-7217, approving the assignment of an agreement from the Pittsburgh Research Park Associates Limited Partnership to Promega Corporation.
Is there a second? This is, I will speak for Pat, who had to leave. Pat is not feeling well. The, we are in a, in a, we're in agreement with the Pittsburgh Research Park Associates Limited Partnership for the easement of East Sherrill Parkway over their undeveloped land. And they would like to transfer it to, to Promega Corporation. We have to give our approval, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. And so I suggest that we all approve this transfer of their rights. Any questions on that?
Could you just, Steve, give us a little bit more background? Approving the assignment of an agreement, and I'm not clear on, I know that we have a very special relationship with Promega. Obviously, we're on the campus or land that they originally purchased. How does this fit?
The East Sherrill Parkway was built to allow the development of Swan Creek, but the land over which it travels between hospice care and Swan Creek is owned by the Research Park Associates and not by the city. So there's not a transportation plat, and it's not a road that we own. We own the road, but it's running over an easement over land that they own. So that is the agreement, that they want to transfer their rights and responsibilities from the limited partnership to Promega Corporation. We will continue to run the road, and when that land develops, they will deed, if ever, they will deed that land that's underneath the road to the city. And, but for now, we don't own it. Does that help?
Sort of. I'm not understanding why we have any say in this at all, if it's between two, two private parties.
No, no. We're one of the parties.
Yeah.
Okay? The agreement is between Pittsburgh Research Park Associates Limited Partnership and the City of Pittsburgh.
Aye.
And they are trying to transfer their rights and responsibilities to a different party. So we will be in agreement with that party.
All right, I'll get more clarity on this later. Yeah, I appreciate it. You're explaining as much as possible, but thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that takes care of Number 11, and that takes us back to...
E, which is Commission on Aging.
Commission on Aging.
They've canceled their April meeting, but they are going forward on their project to look towards the future of the senior center and its service area, and it's...
Okay, RCC?
Thanks. RCC met, sorry about that. RCC met on March 20th, so just over a week ago. The big takeaway is we're obviously, next month is Earth Month, so it kicks off this coming Saturday with the waterway cleanups. We've been doing these for quite a while, and it is a kind of fun event. I would only say a couple of things about that, that Dunn's Marsh, the Apache Pond area right across from Carol's house, has been a great meeting point, and we've always found some great goodies in there, including a console TV that you'll remember. And can't remember what, I guess it was a Friar basket last year, but Yarmouth Greenway is another site that we do work, and we'll, we've got a good crowd hitting that area this year, so starting at PD and going north. And then Swan Creek is one of the other locations. And we've picked up a lot of things over the years, but I think it's especially a good time to bring children out and other people that are looking for an outing. I haven't checked the weather forecast for Saturday, but I found it to be, every year, a pretty good teaching moment and a good chance to meet with neighbors. The only other thing besides that that is worth noting, Pat mentioned it before he, before he left, that Joe Perizzi will be here next week, Wednesday, to talk on behalf of a lot of climate change issues, which seems especially poignant today since about six hours ago, the President declared that, you know, we're going to do away with clean power plants and that type of thing. So I hope that folks will pay attention and will act locally. And Plastic Bag Challenge will come back around. Actually, Alder Crowsey made some good points about possibly working with the grocery stores again, and this time installing racks so that people could bring in fabric bags, and we could reduce the use of plastic bags, you know, with a method that I think is creative and probably would help a lot of people be more aware of, you know, just the problem with plastic bags, and I won't go into that tonight, but we'll bring that back around at a later time. Thanks.
Jason, Transportation and Transit?
No report. There will be a meeting in April, but it has yet to be scheduled.
How about the public hearing on Route 59?
There's no, nothing on the website about the date.
Okay.
There will be a hearing as it relates to the bus, the proposed change in bus route.
Let me look here first. I know I can't make it because it's going to be Wednesday and Thursday of a week, that I will tell you.
One is downtown and one's at Fire Station Number Two, correct?
Right, correct.
No, no, one's at Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, yeah.
Wednesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM at the Madison Central Library. And then the, I guess we're going to have our meeting, but it's not on the city website yet. On Thursday, April 13th at 6:30 PM at the Boys and Girls Club on 4619 Genoan Road in the canteen room.
Very good. So if you have an opinion on the Route 59, you can read about that in the website and weigh in by email or show up. SIDA.
Yes, we didn't meet, but I would like to, on behalf of SIDA, I would like to make a motion to table Resolution R-18016, establishing a process for funding community development partners. I want to refer to SIDA and Finance. We have a resolution...
Second. Second.
Second?
It's already on the table.
You're good.
Okay.
We got a second.
Okay.
It's already on the table.
So...
Oh, gotcha.
But I want to refer back because we already have something for, you know, to present in the next meeting. SIDA and Finance.
Yeah, they're on the form. And we could technically take it off the table and make a referral motion, but without objection, we'll do it all at once.
Okay.
Go ahead. So do you have anything else on, by way of explanation?
No, we, we are closed. We have something that maybe you will like when we bring it back, so.
Very good. So the, all in favor then?
When is it coming back?
What?
When is it coming back?
It's going, it's going to SIDA.
Repeat what you said, just to make sure I have the motion correct. So you motioned to table to refer back to SIDA and Finance?
Yes, correct.
And then come back to council?
Yes.
So...
I think it's really not tabling because it's being referred.
Sure.
So we took it off the table and referred it to Finance.
Take it out of the table and refer back, yeah.
And then redo.
We actually need a couple of motions there.
Yeah, but I combined them.
Yeah.
So anything else to add?
No.
Anything else to add?
The only question was then, when does it come back?
Okay. I would say after the next SIDA meeting, because they only meet monthly.
So like first meeting in May, kind of deal?
Maybe, yes.
End of April.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, because I think SIDA meets the fourth Thursday, right?
Yeah, but we didn't meet in March, so I think we are meet, I don't know when the April meeting is.
All right. So to take it off the table and refer all, to those two groups, all in one motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes, so those are referred. Anything else from SIDA? Anything from Ag and Rural, Tony?
Yes, we tomorrow, we haven't, the group hasn't met, but tomorrow there will be the draft, Ag Plan Draft Open House and Workshop held here at the Council Chambers. At 6:30, the open house starts at 7 o'clock. Wade Thompson will present for the second time an overview of the plan, content, and the process going forward. I would encourage anybody, and I know Carol has specifically expressed interest in this going forward, even though she'll be home in her jammies...
Citizen pool.
A month from now, citizen pool will be watching us on TV or not on Tuesday nights. But I think that we really, this, this could be something big. I really applaud Wade for the work he's put into this and the interest from the Ag and Rural members. And I think that tomorrow night will be a great final sort of pass by the rural landowners. And there's always lively debate and good information that comes out during those. But this thing could be, in my mind, as big as our comp plan because it talks in terms of what Pittsburgh is that isn't bricks and mortar, and there's a lot there. And anybody who's talked to constituents and residents at doors knows that the big reason they're out in Pittsburgh is because it's not Madison and because there are a lot of green fields around here, and that's a really good thing. That's really hard to measure. It's, it's tangible, intangible. So anyway, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, or 6:30, the open house starts, and at 7:00, the overview presentation.
Where is that, Tony?
That'll be right here, in Council Chambers.
Thank you, Tony. Pat EMS?
No report.
Thank you. At Hock Fire Station Committee?
No report. We have not met.
Yep, we did receive the, the...
Appraisals.
Appraisals, which you all received. So next up is the go-ahead to, I assume Tom Hubble will be scheduling a meeting soon to bring together what the architect can show us and the appraisal information and such information as we may have on the possible interest of a partner working with us on fire station, current fire station number one. Standing Committees, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Finance Committee, we approved some bills. We did a detailed review of all checks issued, checks number 114881 to 114932 dated March 16th, 2017, totaling $127,307.94. We also did a review of P card transactions for the cycle ending March 4th, 2017, in the amount of $245,085.47. Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I would motion to approve Resolution R-1417, Resolution authorizing payment to Dane County for monthly court assessments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
This is our kick-up-stairs money for courts.
Very good. And over $25,000, so we need a resolution.
Correct.
Seeing no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Finance, I would also offer up for approval Resolution R-1517, a resolution authorizing payment to the state of Wisconsin for monthly court assessments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same deal, just the state this time.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do these numbers change based on the number of cases we refer up?
Yeah, I mean, they, courts and Misty do their best to sort of...
Project.
Project what it is that they're going to have.
Seeing no further questions or discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one, Pat.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I would offer up approval for Resolution R-5917, accepting the building access control system replacement.
Second.
This is a CIP project that we've been bandiding, bandiding about for a few years. Our current system is out of...
End of life.
It's at end of life, correct, so there is no more support for it. So this is the replacement.
So we'll go in the fire station first and then other existing buildings, the new fire station. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No further report, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Anything from Personnel, Jason?
No report.
Anything more from Public Safety and Human Services?
We had a overview in our meeting today from Chad Grossen regarding a resolution that's going to be referred at our next meeting, which is Resolution R-6517. And this is supporting the establishment of a fire department emergency medical responder program. And this is something that our fire station, or our fire department is going to need to be able to provide to the state of Wisconsin to be licensed, that we have this EMR program in the City of Pittsburgh, and they will be bringing forward information on the program itself. It's all part of their operational budget already. There's no cost involved. It's just basically the council has to affirmatively approve a resolution stating that our, we support our fire department being at this level. So that'll be being referred out at our next meeting, and you guys will see it sometime in April.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of standing committees. Mayor's report. I will make no report tonight. Any, any Alder reports? Tony?
Just a quick announcement that has to do with the exploding pen next to me. No. The bypass on the Southwest Bike Trail that started up since our last meeting, and there's been a lot of concern amongst Bike Pittsburgh and several of the other organizations. You know, just that we have a period now between one and four weeks where we got a lot of bikers and walkers, especially on a day like this, that are going to be having to move around the section, starting on PD, going around by Oak Bank and heading south on Seminole. And normally wouldn't be a big deal. I do have to applaud the Public Works Department for getting out there and doing some road repair, actually some pothole work before that went into effect. But I just want people, the public, to be aware of that, and I, I hope that we'll continue to do things like put cones out there and maybe our temporary signs that direct traffic because we do have cars going down PD at 45 and at least that fast on sections of Seminole Highway. So just want to make sure people are careful, and that, of course, is in District Four, so that's all I'll say about that.
Yeah, just to add to that, the concern is that there are many people who head out the Southwest path who may not be expecting to have to go onto the road, and when they get to the detour, that, that's where they end up. Thank you, Tony. Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I will be on spring break at our next meeting, this is my final meeting at the City of Pittsburgh. I just wanted to make a couple of quick remarks. Thank my family, my wife, Anna, my daughter Alexandra, and my son Edward, who was not born when I started this, and Alexandra was only one. Spent a lot of missed family time over those six years, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart for their patience during this because there's, it's more than they should have to deal with, to be quite frank. I also wanted to thank the staff. They really helped teach me how to do this, in Tony Roach and Mark Sewell, from Mike Zimmerman and Brian Merland and Paul Woodard. They're great examples of how to get information that I needed to get. There were council members that also helped teach me how, what it is to do this job, and Swami Swami Nathan, Richard Blumquist, Becky Baumbock, Dan Carroll, contemporaries of mine, who we came up together and learned how to do this together. I'm going to miss those times. One of the things that makes me the most proud, though, during my time here, is watching a couple of staff people kind of grow into their roles. One of those is Patty. You know, from when we first started to where we are today, I think the clerk's office is in a much better position, and I think that's in a large part due to Patty and growing into that role. So I'm really appreciative, and it's frankly one of the things, like I said, that makes me most proud, that I have nothing to do with, but I'm still proud of it anyway. Another one of those peoples, people is Misty. I think that, you know, we had a little bit of churn from that position, no, no fault to her. But I watched Misty go from being somebody who came from a community and was a finance clerk and became a true department head, and I really appreciate watching that transition. One of the other things that we've done here is hire a great fire chief. Joe Paul Vermaeker couldn't have been a better choice for that position, and we lucked into one of, into just an amazing fire chief. So I think that sets us up for continued professionalization and success down the road. And Pat Marsh, too. I think that's a great hire that's going to keep the city going for a long time. And again, none of that has anything to do with me, but I'm just glad to see that the city has real bright spots and a real path forward. You know, this was, this was kind of a welcome burden when I started, and now it's an unwelcome burden that I'm happy to put down and leave to the rest of the people up here who are going to be here, and to those out there who are going to be up here soon. Just remember that the budget is the single most important document you're going to pass all year. And I was a little disappointed this last year when nobody showed up to those meetings. I think hearing staff tell you to your face what it is that they need is one of the most important things you will do all year, and you need to make time for that. And that is... And that it didn't happen this last year, I think it's either a failing of mine as the finance chair, or it's a failure of the mayor to get you to engage in the process. But one of us screwed up, or both of us screwed up, and we didn't get you to buy in. So I'm sorry for that. But hopefully next year, you guys will be a little bit more engaged in that process, and we can, we can make sure we focus on, on the blocking and tackling that makes the city run. And with that, good night and good luck, everybody.
Yeah, I would like to thank Pat for his service on behalf of all the council and the residents of the city. You've made great contributions and put in a lot of work, and I really appreciate it. So thank you, Pat.
A second to that.
I would, I'd like to offer a round of applause for Pat. And I guess that concludes our finance report.
No, that was a little...
Oh, no, that was, we were down on Alder District Reports. Is anybody else, Jake?
I have an item, and this is just point of order clarification. I did have a tiny amendment to the minutes from the 14th, one word, but it was an important word rather than recused, that wasn't the word abstained. Without objection, I would propose, in the consent agenda that we already approved, that in item five, where it states Johnson abstained, or where it states Johnson recused, that that be changed to abstained. It was a vote last time. I just wanted to make sure.
Is there any objection to that? Okay?
Thank you.
The record will show that. That brings us, we've done, there's no unfinished business. We've done 11. We will meet again. This will be the last meeting of this council on April 11th. And, I'm sorry? Oh, okay. And next committee of the whole will be for the new council, our successors, on April 26th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, just before that, there, unfinished business. I had actually a constituent ask me about digging that's going on over in Uptown.
Yeah.
And curious if there's any...
So I would move for adjournment.
Yep. Is there a second? I got Jake.